Stand up for our pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, a moment of silence. Thank you all very much. May it be seated. All right. Somebody make a motion unless they have any changes they want made to the agenda.
I'm going to go adopt the agenda.
Motion's been made. Can I get a second? Seconded already. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Inanimate. All right, new business. The budget for fiscal year '22. So we're in '21 now?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go through this, Tracy. So I see down here total operations and supplies. Is that $3,800? Is that for classes?
No, that's for everything and the planning commission budget.
Okay. All right, down below that. And then I see salary. So where's the, for training?
Training falls under the category of conventions and education, 505-4.
Okay, so you have $500 for one person.
Correct. And so the dilemma is that, you know, with the discussions recently from the board on, you know, encouraging commissioners to do the planning commissioner program, they need to give us more money. The class currently, the cost is $550. And I believe that they are open to that. So the $550 does, that's just the class. Now, right, you know, because of COVID currently, it's virtually. But if things were to change in the future and they go back to doing in-person training, then it costs about another $500 to do, so with the lodging and the meals and the mileage reimbursement. So typically, if a commissioner is going to the class, it costs about $1,000. So I would suggest, as you know, we have five commissioners that don't have the certified program now. So I was prepared to figure out that as if we were doing in-person training. Again, I'm not saying that that's how it will be. More than likely, it will be virtual. But they haven't put out the schedule yet, which is the next item that we're going to talk about. So I would suggest that we bump that up to at least, at least the $5,000. And I think again...
Now, that $5,000, now that's, now counting, that's not the virtual training, that's the going to the class.
No, that's in-person, correct. If they do it virtual only, then it's 550, so 550 times 5. But from a budgeting perspective, it's always best aim for more than to go back and say, I need more. So I was planning on requesting $5,000 in that line item. And that's just for the ones that need it now, so.
Probably in January, two more of them.
If they change, correct.
Who expires in January?
I think John in Birmingham.
So, okay, so we got, well, they have two years according to our bylaws to get...
Yeah, our bylaws do say that, right.
I think if you ask for more, I think the supervisors may balk a little bit at that. So $5,000, because this is hopefully a one-year budget request as far as the $5,000 goes.
In all honesty, we should do a little extra because, you know, there are, you know, COVID has changed...
It's pretty bare bones anyway.
It is. I agree. But COVID has changed a lot of even the training courses that I've been, I've missed out on. A lot of them have been canceled. But your bylaws do say that even after you become a certified planning commissioner, that you should do, I don't know if it says annually. Anyway, it implies that you should do any other courses, and I'm pretty sure it says annually, that would help you in your planning commissioner duty.
Okay, add that to...
So if we were going to add that, we would need to bump it up. Typically, those classes are about...
We used to. I remember years ago, there were broad and Chandler ones.
Yeah, that's not going to happen. I've tried to do that, that's not going to happen.
No, 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 I'm not asking.
They make more money off of...
Yeah. But if there is some sort of additional training that has faced, once you get your initial training, there's nothing wrong if you can go, some of these additional things, just go there for a Saturday if you're willing to take the time.
I agree.
But it's got to be in the budget.
Right, and those classes typically cost between $100 and $200. Like the one that I was going to do just this month that got canceled, it was $200 books. So again, if we are going to factor that, then we need to bump that number up as well.
All right, what do you suggest that we bump that up to?
Well, if you're going to say we have 10 members and I'm going to estimate that the courses are $200, I would say whatever that is, what, $1,200?
$200, $1,200.
10 times 2, $2,000.
One vacation, please excuse me, yes.
Yeah.
So bump it up another...
Is that on their training?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
So, and I agree with your, I agree with your plan. It's easier to ask for more, as you know, they're going to cut it because they always have. But is there a number that's going to make them go? This is ridiculous, this is too high.
Well, if they do, I'm prepared to say, we've been, we've been hearing from you all that you want the commissioners to have these courses, then we need the money to take the courses.
So let's add that, add $200 per person.
Okay.
So is that a line item for 5054, $7,000 or $8,000?
What's the line item on that?
I'd say let's do 7.
Which one?
5054 conventions and education.
Okay, okay, so... Well, you already got, you had $5,000, and so add another...
Actually, so what we need to do...
No, it's split between meals and lodging.
Yeah, we need to, yeah.
Well, we need to put it in one of the two. Okay, so $400 plus $5,000. Or actually, plus $4,500.
Now, we're going to have to go up some amount. That would be a guess, though.
Yeah. I think it's like $0.01 a mile now.
The meal wouldn't be half because...
It's $52,000.
Is it $50,000?
The $200 ones, you would have to travel for those, would you?
Typically, they're in Richmond. Most of these trainings are in Richmond.
So that would be...
Kathy, your commissioner training was in Harrisonburg, right?
Yeah, and there was no meals or anything.
It wasn't?
Nope. They provided the meal.
Yeah.
So there was no additional cost than the truck.
Yeah, when you stay, and that's why it's great when it comes up, when it is Harrisonburg. Not this year that you did it, but the previous year and the year before that, they canceled. Most of the time, they don't have enough participation for Harrisonburg. So typically, it is Richmond.
Speaking of...
Did you, okay, yeah.
So between 5053 and 5054, we have what, $7,000 in between the two?
Yes.
Oh, you want up $2,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to add something to mileage or be conservative yet?
I think so.
So in addition to that?
Five people, times...
I mean, more than a year.
Because that meeting could be all the way on the other side of the state. There are meetings over there. There are meetings that are in Virginia Beach or close to that area. Or do we want to count it in between?
Let's use Williamsburg as a meeting point.
So how far is that?
More than likely, there'll be some on Zoom if they're in the beginning of the year for sure.
Well, yeah, we're, we're, we understand that.
For those who feel comfortable doing Zoom, there'll be an opportunity to keep the cost down.
Oh, for sure.
I hope those of you who want to travel.
I just don't want to have to go back from front to board.
Yeah, I understand.
340 around here.
So 340 times 50 cents.
Uh, no, I think it's like $52,000.
Okay, well...
Let's use that for the sake of argument.
It's about $150.
So it's 100, call it $179.
Per, so times 5.
Well, that's another $1,000, there you go.
Just call it 900 or 1,000 if you want.
You'll do a thousand.
Contingency.
So remember that.
We're doubling.
Because we're, we're kind of... Okay.
Tracy, I have a question. What's the advertising budget?
It's $1,500 currently.
No, no, but what is it for?
Oh, advertisements.
For public hearings and things like that.
Resonating, ordinance amendments.
Oh, public hearings and...
We, we...
Suddenly advertising a paper a year or...
I think it's okay.
So we haven't gone over budget this year on, on the advertising? See, most of the posting.
Yeah, postal's good. Postal is for certified mailings. SGP and rezoning maps have to be sent, adjoining public hearings have to be sent, certified mail. So that's why it's that.
Why would that be on... See, I thought this was for the planning commission.
It is. That comes out of the planning commission budget, the postal.
I thought, well, you're saying, but you've cut back on sending stuff to us, but...
This is not for you all. Well, the only people that I mail packets to is Donnie and Steve because they don't do email.
Sometimes you don't do that.
Hey, the mail delivery person.
Paul, I see.
I'm sorry, what was your question? They've gotten me sidetracked. Oh, so that is just for certified mailings. And with the upcoming ordinance amendments, I think, I think we're safe at 300 for that.
Okay.
The same, right?
Yeah.
All right, so put these numbers in there for the, for maybe the next meeting, and then we'll vote on it then.
Okay.
All right. And then... All right, so is that all you've got?
Yes.
Or you want to talk about, you want to talk to anybody about the certified planning commissioner training?
Um, just to say that, you know, again, they don't have the 2021 schedule posted yet. As soon as it's available, I'll let you know for the ones that need it.
Those of you who know you need it will be gone. All right. And she does have an upcoming event on here. Check that out. All right. I was saying earlier, there was a lot put out at that last meeting, our joint meeting, with the planning commission and the supervisors. A lot of things, some things people agreed with, some didn't. But, and some things that, I'll tell you, they brought it up and I did not understand. One thing I did not understand was the sliding scale, rezoning for by right. But there's a lot of them. We need to talk about these, and I asked Tracy to talk about that tonight.
So the handouts that I've passed out to you tonight on the table, they came from the Berkeley group today. They asked me to forward this to you, to, for you all to review this, to show you the importance of, I guess, overall, how we're losing farmland. As you know, they do not support the one, the current ordinance that says you can subdivide ag or woodland conservation into parcel, once, once every two years, but only into two parcels. Or, I'm sorry, every five years. They don't support that, which I understand from their perspective overall, because as we said in the last meeting, there are some people that know exactly when their five years is up and they're ready to come in and do a division. So I understand that over time, we're chopping up our farmland, we're just doing it every five years. However, and I'm not, I'm not bashful to say this, I have expressed concern with the sliding scale that they talked about at the last meeting, that the board and some of the commissioners seem on board with. I encourage you to think carefully.
Will you...
In a short summary, let me, yeah. So, and bear with me because I'm still trying to understand it as well.
Do we have a diagram around anywhere?
If you can.
In there, yeah.
We talked about this, you know, we talked about this some time ago, and my understanding that this may have changed, but this was something to maybe promote cluster development, to preserve their development rights on a parcel, but promote the same number of parcels made smaller in an area so that in the end, you would have your number of houses, like say you had a 100-acre parcel.
It may.
I did not understand it that way at the last meeting. You'd have like 20, 3/4 acre lots with some houses on it, and you'd have the remainder would still be a big piece of farmland.
And you'd do it one time.
You'd never want to be developed, or divided, going further.
Is that a...
And if that's...
Tracy, does that sound like I'm on the right track? But there's a time...
And then I want to hear your side of the, Tracy.
My understanding is that, so let's, let's say, let me get my notes here. Well, I know if you had a five-acre tract of land, you'd only get two lots out of it. If you had a 20-acre, 20-acre tract of land, you'd only get four lots out of it. But let's say you had a 10-acre tract. Now, that's not a good example. Let's go with an eight-acre tract of land.
A 20-acre, you could get 11 lots.
Not according to Berkeley group.
No, they're doing two acres, they're doing a two. That's another, that's another thing.
No, it's acre and 3/4.
No, that's, they're suggesting two acres now.
No, that's going to change, the minimum lot size.
So there's...
Basically, we're going to have to change, this, I'm going to be honest, this is why it...
So if you got a 20-acre, if you got a 20-acre parcel...
You can only get four lots. Look at the diagram.
You can get 10 lots.
Right, now you can.
Oh, you're talking about in, in the future?
Yes, this is what they want to change it to.
So this sounds a little bit different than the cluster development.
It is.
Because the cluster development would give you smaller lots in, in an area and the rest of it will...
Yeah, now that has nothing, I don't think that has anything to do with it last term, does it?
They are talking about in the new residential zoning district, which it kind of goes along with. So basically, here's what it boils down to. If you want, let's say, out of that 20 acres and you want more than four lots, then you're going to have to rezone. So you're taking an ag piece of land and you rezone it to the new district that's going to be called Ag Residential, which will allow for a higher density. But we're still, I don't know what the numbers will be, we're still going to say of that 20 acres, even when you rezone, you can only have a certain number of lots and minimum lots. So the way we think about the minimum lot size now, we can't think...
You're actually eating up more land instead of...
My opinion is you're going to be, over time, here's where I, here's where I have concern. If, if, if you come in and say, first of all, as you know now, a Class A or Class B subdivision is very hard to do because number one, the roads have to be taken into VDOT. That's why we don't have...
That was another thing I wish you would have been here for, because they talked about that a little bit, you know.
Right now, we don't, we haven't had a true subdivision since the boom, 2008, the Lucas subdivision, that was the last one. And they, they, their roads still have not been taken in into the system. They hold a, there's a bond that's outstanding anyway, aside from that, because it's costly. My concern to them is, okay, so if we're going to say, number one, we're going to take this 20 acres out of ag and we'll make it Ag Residential because you can get a higher density. What's going to happen to the roads? Are you going to say in that Ag Residential rezoning that now you have to bring the roads up to meet VDOT standards? People, people don't do that now because it's so costly. My caution to Berkeley group was, if you're going to do this, then you better figure out how to make it work to where they're not going to always have to go into VDOT standards, or VDOT PANS is what I heard, I should say it. Because people won't do it. And my concern is people, and again, I hear where they're coming from, I understand it. But people are in my office every other day confronting because they can't do more than one division every five years now. So I have a lot, I, I understand there needs to be a change from their perspective because of this farming, this farm handout that we give you. But I'm concerned mainly because I'm going to be the one having to do all the people that are going to be highly upset because they, you know, again. So if you have an eight-acre tract of land, let me go back to that. If you have an eight-acre tract of land, you could get, out of the first five acres, you can get two lots. But then after that, it's one house for every five acres. So because you only have three acres left...
Well, that eats up the farmland even worse.
Hang on. Because you have only three acres left, then you just have three acres. You, basically, you've got to make that a part of the first divisions that you do.
I mean, it makes it prettier, but it's eating up farmland.
Well, not really. Their way, it's not. What's, in my opinion, what's going to change is everybody's going to come in and reason.
Because you can't, you can't use it for farmland.
You can.
No, because it would be...
Oh, because of the house. You're saying because of the house.
You put a house on it, all of a sudden, you can't do that because land use...
But that's what people are doing now, once every five years. I mean...
And you're not going, most people just, you know, if they got five acres and they got a house in there, they just move along. That's not saving it.
I understand the theory, it does. I just don't think it's a fit for Page County, but...
They would have to explain the...
Have they given us a scale? Because I'm looking at the one in Fokier right now on my phone. Because that was a very good example and they have a...
Essex is the county that they are comparing us to with the sliding scale. I'm not fooled it, I didn't have time today.
Compare your side.
Essex, Essex County.
So you know what the terrain in Essex County is?
Because they usually give you the scale, they tell you how many lots and what size.
It is completely and totally flat. So the terrain's got to be taken into account to some extent. And they maybe, maybe it does preserve farmland, but they would have to explain that.
It didn't make sense to me. I've seen part where you talked about with clustering, that makes sense to me with clustering. But they, they touched on clustering, but they didn't really get into that deeply.
If you had 100 acres, and you could get, let's, to make the math easy, two acre lots, that's 50 lots. Wouldn't you rather have 50 small lots all around one corner and the rest of it remains open?
Well, yeah.
They could never be developed, never be devised.
Well, it would be a subdivision in a sense.
I want to read for you.
But it would be.
But that's, we're subdividing.
But, but you would have a very, you're, you're actually conserving farmland when you do it that way.
You are.
Because instead of...
I don't see that.
Because they're not going to, you know, I don't see that.
And you could also do it around the edges where they have access on the public grid.
So according to them, it says, as, as an example, a five-acre parcel may be allowed two lots, while a 20-acre parcel may be allowed four lots, one dwelling, one dwelling unit per five acres. And a 100-acre parcel may be allowed eight lots, one dwelling unit per five acres for the first 20 acres and one dwelling unit per 20 acres thereafter. So every 20 acres, only one house.
Now, you can't, now with 20 acres, you can, you can, you have the choice of using it as a, for land use, which gives the owner, the owner's got to buy a pretty big piece of land, but they'll be able to do that. You have two acres or 1.75 acres you have your house on, or one acre you have your house on, then the rest of it you can put into land use if you choose to. I know in Foxer County, they do that a lot, and there's a lot of farmers who benefit big time from that because they're not charged them to use that land because it's a tax burden. But, but if you do under five acres, or under, actually, under six acres, you're not, you're not benefiting at all.
So Tracy, when I read here on page eight of what they gave us here, and I think you just read for that?
Yes.
It said, as an example, a five-acre parcel may be allowed two lots, allowed two lots, or 20 acres. They said that was only an example, so they haven't set the scale yet.
Oh, no, but that's...
You would have to set the scale.
You, right, if you don't want the scale, that example right there, then be prepared to tell them what it is. Because if you don't, that's what it's going to be.
Okay, because I'm looking, for instance, as a point of comparison, as the scale in Fokier, and it's a completely different scale.
Well, you can have a different scale every time. Like a rock and hand is totally different than us.
But I'm not saying that we should not reject the whole concept just because we don't like the scale. Maybe the concept would work better for us, but with a different scale.
We just need to get a really good understanding of it.
And so here's my advice for you all. Be prepared to tell them what you think that is because...
Well, yeah, I don't like the idea they're telling us because they don't know this.
Right, I mean, they're in the middle of drafting the ordinance. They're going to tell you what they think it should be based on, you know, their consultant.
Well...
In their defense, their consultant, their consultant, they've given us, here's their first draft or something, and then they're waiting on feedback, and we'll give them feedback.
Yes.
Now, if they come back and tell us, you're wrong, this is the way it needs to be, that's not...
Well, see, now, you know, we go back to the, they want to do it two acres. And in a way, some of us feel, and even some of the supervisors feel, that some of this could become, instead of 1.75 acres, it's been brought to our attention by the health department that, you know, if they went out and checked out a lot and verified that the first, they might be able to get it down to a much smaller size because they would know that would conform to the setbacks, they would be able to put in a septic, they would be able to put in a well in a smaller size, which would then take less farmland.
So what they're not saying, and we could put something there about functional lot sizes, you can only get two lots, two acres, or...
But it's just, it's like a waste.
Kind of like we do with a functional right-of-way when we started with a functional right-of-way.
Yes.
And then that way, the other lot will get all that additional acreage. So I mean, if you have two lots, two acres, if you can get by with a half an acre, which is probably extreme, if you get by with a half an acre, the other acre and a half will get back to the other lots, you don't wish to alter the lot. But you would never have more than two lots.
So you're saying the boundaries could be flexible.
The boundaries do be flexible, but you wouldn't have...
But you're not saving, you're not saving farmland. If that's what, if that's what their intention is, then that's not really saving anything.
On a five-acre lot, it's not doing anything. On a 20-acre lot, it's really not accomplishing anything. When you get to the 100, it is starting because it's making these 20-acre lots.
The only thing I'm seeing it's doing is it's reducing the amount of septic and wells that would be going in on a major lot. That's the only thing I see it doing. It doesn't really save anything else other than the amount of wells that are going into the ground.
Well, and it, and it, I don't think it does to the extent of what we're looking for in a revision, but as the, as you get to these larger parcels, when you get to more and more, you can have fewer lots. So eventually, the lot sizes get bigger, or they still...
Well, I, I think that, that, but we've gotta consider land use as part of this. You know, when they're, when they're talking, we've gotta consider land use, which is a minimum of five acres, exactly five acres and the less. Not four point nine nine, which somebody found out in this county, I believe. Did they, I think there was somebody that, I heard somebody had put six acres out there and then they had one point one acres for the house and all of a sudden, the land use people said, yeah, I remember the, the ladies coming in here one time and saying that could give land use. So, it's very particular, because it's state ran and it's not ran by us, so.
Um, if, can you please pull up the document that I laid at your table today? Um, that says November tenth, twenty twenty meeting summary, and then go to page five. So, I know, I haven't even had a chance to read this, I'm looking at it right now with you all, and I know you all haven't. But this is the result of the conversation from that meeting. So, as you'll see, there they go with their example again. A five acre parcel may be allowed two lots. Well, a twenty acre parcel may be allowed four lots, one dwelling unit per five acres, or zero point two unit per acre. So I wanna know if that makes sense to you.
Can you repeat that so you see?
Well, read it. Read, read under option one on page five, where it says with sliding scales, it starts there.
Yeah, that don't. Why? Is there a reason why?
And so the point to saying this tonight, again, is this.
A hundred would only allow eight lots?
This is the draft, this is the examples that are going, that are going to be in the draft. So I'm telling you tonight, I'm encouraging you, please, read through this, think about it, and be prepared to come back to them and say, yes, this sounds perfect, and come and explain it to me first. Or, no, it doesn't, and this is what we think it should be. That's my request for you all.
All right, let's people think about the numbers that we see now. Do you think it should be larger or smaller?
Even the twenty five acre division, that's gonna stay and the family divisions are gonna stay. So this won't impact family divisions and the twenty five acre. That's where, if you have a fifty acre parcel, you can do one division, as long as you're not creating a new right of way. Fifty foot right of way, and each lot can be a minimum of the twenty five acres, that will stay. And that's state code protects that, so yes.
Okay, so, Donnie, what do you think of this?
I say where you're gonna have to increase, but. Five acres, you may have hildings and gullies and stuff like that, where you can't view it all that. So you need to get four acres, four lots out of the area like that. Somebody's gonna end up with a trash pile there trying to build a household.
When I was under the impression that month that we were looking at this to keep from having to go see all the SUPs in the five year waiting, you know. So, to me, this is either this or five year waiting. But if we do this, we need to probably home it out a little better than the two acres or whatever. I don't, I don't know what it'll be, but it needs to be. This, this lets the farmer, if he wants to divide his property, do it all at one time. Where now, he has, every five years, he has to divide it.
True, true, but it would allow him to divide it down even further, lots if he wants to, which would give him a rights.
Five, five years, yeah.
Yeah, if he waited five years. The, the SUP part, I don't think there's any SUP.
The house.
So, so there's no SUP.
But you're right on the five year.
You have to wait five years.
But you gotta wait five years. Where this, this does really restrict, I don't know, it seems like the larger the lot, the, the, the more, the less you can do with it. So, so anyway, that's what I'm seeing. Anyway, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, Gary?
Well, I remember, while they were talking about it, they had a diagram, I think it was about forty acre.
Yeah, it's on, um.
We're pulling it up.
It's on the next page, Gary, turn the page.
Yeah.
Page six.
I have behind it.
Yeah.
It's hard to understand.
It's kinda hard to understand it there, but, I mean. I got a piece of land that I wanna, you know, build houses on. Okay, so, so right now, we have what? Say I had a hundred acres to develop. Okay, which comes in underneath the fifty foot right of way, streets, curbing, and all this stuff, which is underneath the state code, great. Okay, now, we go back to twenty acres. With four lots, then the streets or none of that stuff comes underneath the state code again. Am I right about that?
Uh, if it's done under residential, so that's gonna, that's gonna be the thing. With the sliding scale zoning, they also talked about putting in road requir, road requirements.
So right now, it's optional. I mean, that, you're right, that's a big expense. You gotta have an engineering firm do plans, even rain for it.
Well, the only thing about that, though, I know it's a big expense and stuff, but we have a lot of subdivisions in this county right now. Groundhead, uh, Shenador, we got a lot of them up there that during these old laws and stuff that people complaining that they can't get enough money to even keep their roads up. So, I mean, if, if I see anything that we wanna improve on, as far as getting to homes built on a farmland or a parcel lot, then I think we need to look back at some of the complaints that we've had over the years and still have them right now, guard against this. Uh, I don't, I mean, this here is wide open right here to what I see. I mean, uh, what do you got down here? I mean, I could go there and throw up four houses here, bang, here or there, and some of them have a dirt lane going to each one of them.
They're, they're going to, they didn't talk a lot about that, but it's mentioned in the memo. They are going to require developmental rights, which will include road stuff.
Yeah, but I heard off a lot of slacker, the expense of that too.
Yeah, we didn't talk about it, exactly, yes, yes.
So, I mean.
Which is going to, right, another expense on the development.
No expense on whoever's building the homes and to sell them, whatever. But you, you gotta take into consideration too, uh, if you're a builder, you're looking ahead of this. I mean, uh, if I, if I'm a decent builder that's out selling homes, then I would provide the best as far as the in and out and the appearance to keep from having any complaints later on down the years. So look, he throws up four houses, look at all the people he's gotta go through, potholes, muddy roads. Because I done been to be there. I can, I can take you to a lot of them right now. So I think we need to think about this also. Got them over here against the mountain over here.
So are you thinking about what type of restrictions you'd like to see when it comes to that?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be a lot of work. I know we're looking at the size lots and, and everything, and we're talking about farm, saving farmland, but. If, if we're gonna save farmland, then why are we selling the farmland to build homes on? Or why is the farmer selling the, the land if he's using that land, the farm? That's, that's my, been my question about this to start with.
The, the farmer.
That's my argument, I agree with you. Because the people that come in, nine chances out, nine times out of ten, they're, they may have large tracts of land, but they're not actually farming the land.
They're not farming that land, it's exactly right.
They may get pay and land use and all, but they're not, you know.
The only thing I see is the way I paying tax to the county, that's what they.
Oh, yes, you're absolutely right.
Oh, I, you exactly, I know I'm right.
I know you're right.
Yes, sir.
I've seen many people come in here and they buy big lots just for that reason.
That's exactly right. I'll come here and buy a fifty acres, I'll stick his house on here. And I'll go land use and I don't have to pay, I've got a big break on taxes on this land use tax.
And, and that's, that's, that's a loophole, and the farmer, there are farmers that benefit from that, that don't pay anything.
Hey, if you wanna farm it.
But it is a.
Yeah, if you wanna farm it, that's fine and dandy. If you wanna sell it for profit for houses, then eh.
Well, that comes back later. If you do that, I think they, they go, land use comes back like five years and don't tax you on it, isn't that, is that right?
There's a rollback.
There's a rollback, so, yeah, it's not exactly.
Rollback, oh, I mean, so, so, hey.
Are we gonna debate land use or are we gonna?
No, we're not.
No, Donnie, I, I mean, but, you know, that's.
All right, well, I wanted to ask you, because you were talking, you know more about access in the roads, and he was talking about that. Could you kinda cover what he, he was talking about there? And, and, because we've, we've had subcommittee on this for a couple of years now. And I want him to kinda answer that question, and then we'll go around a little bit further. If you could answer his question on, on.
So VDOT's got a manual for secondary and subdivision street acceptance, and you've gotta build the roads to their standards. And it's not a cheap endeavor. I mean, it costs a fair amount of money, it's gotta be engineered. So there's a farmer, he wants to subdivide and, and cash out, he's done farming. And he just wants to be done with it, wants to retire it. And he's gonna have to hire an engineer, he's gonna have to hire a construction company, come in and build it, you know, with, with the road template, with the entrance to the state maintained road that he's connecting into. He's gonna have to survey it and the, and the design and, and everything. Then he's had, had to have the bond, right, Tracy? And have the bond, and he's gonna have to have VDOT come out, maybe inspections, work with them until they finally take it into their system. So it's not an easy or a cheap thing to do. I don't know that it would dissuade, I don't know what percentage of people would dissuade from doing this, but I'm sure it would dissuade some people that say, well, if you do this, now you gotta build a road, this gotta be taken into the VDOT system.
But you don't right now, right?
There's no requirement. It's, it's, right now, you know.
It would become, it would become a, a.
Private subdivision.
A private road that, that, the, 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 the surrounding landowners would, would pay on or agree to.
We don't know, and quite frankly, Tracy doesn't care. But what she does care about is getting the calls from people that says, uh, Coler washed out in a flood, it's a bunch of snow on the road and I can't get out, when you guys gonna compile it? She doesn't, we don't do that, VDOT doesn't do that, because it's their asset, not they've got an HOA or they got a meeting, screaming with their home or something in the deeds. If somebody's not paying, that's not an enforcement issue for Tracy, that's a civil litigation issue. So, the county, the county would prefer that all the roads be taken into the system and that we not have any private roads at all.
But that's probably not gonna happen because of the creative expense.
But because of the expense, if, if we put this out there and say, anytime anybody subdivides, you've gotta put a road in, it's gotta be built to VDOT standards, I think you're gonna see probably the same reaction when we, we got with four plane ordinance, it's not gonna be very well received.
Okay.
But also, if you got a hundred acres and you got eight lots, and this builder builds nice homes, you better have people that buys in with some money and create a property under situation. Where you can have money coming in yearly or monthly for maintaining the roads.
But that's not a requirement, that's not a requirement, but.
That's not, that's not, that's not a requirement, but.
But if you had a hundred acres and sold, you didn't care either.
And if I sold it, I don't care? That's for, that's for those property owners to be sure of.
That's what happened a lot these subdivision years, but.
That's a mess. All right, um, hope that answered your question.
One of those questions, I've, under the state now, what is the limit or the number of homes that's that are, say that is a subdivision?
I don't know, I think that pulls back to our subdivision ordinance, so.
Pulls back on what we were trying to get done, right?
Basically, it could be two, right?
I mean, really, because you got a piece of land and the entrance of that land off of a state route. Say, then VDOT is gonna tell you what it's gonna take to make an entrance on and off of that piece of land, correct?
The entrance is a standard.
Entrance is a standard, right.
They, they have a standard for the road, they have a standard for the entrance, all that stuff is already predefined.
Yeah, but I mean, you, you're saying that they have, or the state has a standard, telling you how, why that road's gotta be back in there? All, all the state property.
The length, the ditch widths, all of that stuff.
Do they tell them back, oh, that's, if they, if you want them to accept.
If you want them to accept it, you gotta build it to their standards and they tell you what the standard is, the width of the roadway, the width of the ditches.
But to, to your point, I think, right now, what people are doing, when they're getting their one point seven five acres and they need a fifty foot right of way, they just have to get an entrance permit to say, this is where the entrance has to be. VDOT doesn't say that part, I think that's what he's talking about, right?
I thought it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the reason why.
Those are, those are two separate issues.
Right, that's why.
The entry for a lot and, and all of those, all that geometry for a road that is intended to be taken into the system.
Right.
And what happens over time is with the, with, because of the once every five years, we may have someone who puts in a fifty foot right of way for a twenty five acre piece. But by right, right now, they could get immediately, they could get two, they could get four lots. They could divide the twenty five acres, they could make a ten acre and a fifteen acre. They could then come and do a subdivision of the ten acres and the fifteen acres. And they're, they're still not having to do any of that. All they, all the code currently says is you need a fifty foot right of way, and that's what you're talking about, right?
That's exactly right.
Yes.
Give you an example, the Lucas subdivision.
Yes.
I'll give you, that's a good prime example right there.
But that one was, was done as a subdivision. It's supposed to be paved and hasn't been done.
Right.
That's why they have a bond, it's out.
Right up through her one time, you'll find out what kind of roof you gotta be in there.
Yes, yes.
So that, I mean, that's, you know, that's what I'm looking at, even through what they're talking about. You got twenty acres, you ain't had four lots or whatever, but what I'm looking at is what type of streets that we need to have our own ordinance if somebody's gonna do that. I mean, the state don't have nothing to do with back in Arizona. When they turn right there, Jack's old service station up near Lucas, off of three forty, that's it for y'all. Only thing y'all had anything to do with would have been the entrance to that right there.
Nope, nope, nobody has anything to do with that, the county, it's a private road.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
And until they do some work to get it taken, to get it brought up to, it'll always be a private road.
Yeah, it would always be, but that's what I'm saying, that's where Tracy's getting a lot of complaints from.
That we don't do anything about. And I think with this, my, my take from the Berkeley Group was, we are going to put some regulations in there to address that. And while I think that's brand, I think that's also from a staffing standpoint. All I gotta say is be clear in your language, I mean, from, again, because it all comes down to enforcement. You can put pretty words on paper, it's easy to sit behind tables and write laws, but when it comes down to enforcement, that's a whole different thing. I've said that for ten years.
Yep.
Because old farms, so, for that state maintained part.
Yes, yes.
Fine.
They got some nice trees out there.
Yeah, they're, they're state maintained.
Kathy?
What scares me and what I'm looking at right here on page six is just underneath the little, uh.
Diagram.
Diagram. It says, discussion, there was overwhelming support for not continuing, et cetera, et cetera. And then, we know that our supervisors, in their wisdom, and I wanna put wisdom in inverted commas because actually, you don't think it was very wide, wanted to accelerate the calendar on this whole. wanted to accelerate the calendar on this whole process so that we're actually, instead of discussing this in February, we're going to discuss it in January. We're, we're seeing here this overwhelming support. How can there be support of a concept that we don't even understand? So if we, the commissioners, don't understand it, and I'm sorry with all due respect to the supervisors, they don't get it either. If we don't get it, they don't get it. The public isn't going to get it either and we're going to pass this in a rush because the Berkeley group is trying to rush us to do it.
And that's why we're talking about it tonight.
In January, that's just crazy. And I don't mind being quoted as saying that, that's just not, this is a concept that we're grappling with. You know, we were presented with the concept, uh, on a, I believe we received an email on a Friday afternoon. The next Tuesday, we went to this meeting, which is summarized in this document. And we were asked to give our opinion and we're saying there's overwhelming support. That was all, that was not really overwhelming support. I mean, that's their perception, but we didn't really know what we were supporting. I can see you nodding over there, Gary. We were supporting something which we didn't really know about, anything about, and I'm, that's why we're talking tonight. So all of this haste scares me. We should take our time, there's no way that we're going to sell quote unquote, any of these concepts to the public and to the farmer unless we have a very good understanding of what they are ourselves. We need to be convinced that they're good, Tracy needs to be convinced that they're good. Then we need to talk to the supervisor, convince them, not the reverse. So all of this haste for something that's so alien to us really scares me. I have spent hours and hours studying this, I've looked at the ordinances, I'll read you something interesting here from Focia here. If you will permit me, or I will tell you what it's about. They have a little brochure that they published, uh, so that people would understand how it works. And they were giving an example here. Um, you see, when you look at this, uh, splitting of a lot, they consider the lot on the day the ordinance is adopted. Okay, let's say it's whatever day next year. Forty years down the road, like it's the, like it is in, in Focia County, you could have a ten acre lot which you're not allowed to subdivide because it's one of the children, if you want, one of the split offs of the hundred acre lot. So it can't be split anymore. Whereas the one next door, which was not a split off from the original property, but an original property itself, a parent lot, can then be split off. Meaning this is going to be really hard for the public to understand in ten, twenty, thirty, or forty years. They're going to say, well, how come Gary can split his and I can't split mine? And we'll have to go back and say, well, twenty years ago in two thousand twenty one, you know, when we did this, this is what? People are just not going to get this unless we take a long time in explaining it. And that's why Focia County had this PDF. You can Google it, Google sliding scale zoning, it comes up on the second thing in, in Google. And it's a little brochure that explains it quite well, but it is not easy. It's going to be heavy for you to administer, not maybe right now, but as the year go back, as the years go on. People are just not going to get it, why their twenty acre lot cannot be subdivided anymore because it's already been subdivided by their grandparents.
There's enough work right now. When you do the, the five, once every five years, I mean, basically I have to do a title search of your property to see when, if, what the parent track is. Was that track subdivided in the last five years? Was the parent track subdivided in the last three years? There's time into what we got now. That is going to be a whole other level.
It's going to be even worse because you're going to have to, two parcels which would seem to be equivalent, maybe right on this same state route, are going to be treated in a different manner because they did not originate in the same way from the parent lot.
Correct.
And people are not going to get that. This is going to be really a hard sell and I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but we should certainly start having a conversation that we should not be having under pressure.
Well, once it's a twenty acre lot, now it will always be a twenty acre lot, which is.
Yeah, but you will not be able to in twenty or thirty years re-subdivide it.
That's right, that's right. And I don't think that's true because things change. Things have been getting smaller for years and.
It will stay forever.
And that's, they're trying to stop that. Yeah, I, I agree with that.
What I'm saying is we shouldn't rush into this, into any concept without fully understanding it. If we're having to understand it, everybody else will. So there was maybe an apparent overwhelming support, but not knowing, not knowing what the support was about. And, uh, this is not an easy concept. I've done little else for the last three days, we've studied these things nationwide, pulled out all my books from training. This is not an easy concept. And the, the option two that they're offering us, they're only offering two options, is increase the agricultural district minimum lot size. We didn't spend much time talking about that at all. Because they understood that we were going to support the sliding scale, so they're running with that. But, I mean, we might want to have a conversation about what would we think would be the best, what do you all think? Tracy, what would you recommend then? If you don't, you don't seem to like the sliding scale?
I don't have a recommendation, I'm, I'm not sure.
So what about option B then, option two, a minimum lot size? How is that a, is that any better?
Well, I'll be honest, we haven't spent a lot of time talking about it with, with the Berkeley group and stuff because the
They've said it up before.
Observation was that this sliding scale was not what we wanted, even though that's what, not what staff wanted.
But that's just, they had the impression that's what we wanted. I'm just saying that's not what we want because we didn't know what we were being told.
And, you know, with, for example, uh, one thing that I have told them, which, and I think others have told them, you know, we, we are not Rappahanna County. We don't want twenty five acre minimum lot sizes. That's, that's not, in my opinion, that's not a pain count. So that's what option two was going to go to, I'm not, I'm not going to support that either. So I don't know what the answer is.
Then maybe we need an option three and an option four. Because if option one is too complicated, option two makes us look like Rappahanna County, then we need to go back to the joint vote and all that. And then in that perspective, I don't think we need to be rushed to arrive at something in, uh, in January so that they can rush it to, uh, you know, to conclude.
Well, I'd like to make a statement on that. I think if you heard the supervisors last time, especially when I brought up the part about breaking us down from, from ten commissioners to five, that was brought up that we took too long on, on the solar project and whatever. And, uh, I believe that, uh, they want, they want to get this thing moving. So we need to do our homework and be, and have our answers. We need to talk about these specific issues because they are going to push this thing. We're, remember, we're the recommending party. We're not, we, we don't set law here, they do. And if they want to move this thing along, they can move it along and there's not a lot we can do about it. So we've got to have our, our act together. I appreciate the way you're reading through this thing and getting as much, and what we need. It's like last week I talked to, to Tracy about this. I was very concerned about this late, this thing. And also about, about the, the part on ag, about the, the dual zoning and stuff like that. That's the other issue I really wanted to talk about tonight and I don't know if we'll get to it or not, but we need to because there was a lot of conversation after the meeting last, and I don't think everybody totally understood it. But we're, here's our, our wall is going to be the supervisors because they want this thing immediately. So we, we, if we have to, I'm willing to come in an extra week, you know, come in on, on another Tuesday or something, if necessary.
So I hear you on that and I understand and I empathize that we need to please the supervisors, but I don't think we need to be railroaded into making decisions about things that we don't understand. That's just not right.
That you're going to be stuck with an ordinance, I mean.
Exactly.
For.
The, we're going to.
I agree, we can, we can argue with them, but remember, we are a recommending party. They can say, thank you very much for your opinion, let's move on. And that's the end of it.
Yeah, but I, I agree, but that should.
So we've got to have our, if we have our, you're a lawyer, you know you've got to have your fact, we just got to have our facts right and we've got to be able to tell them what it is.
During the work sessions, and, and not just during the work sessions, you all need to use your voices to express your concerns with, because.
This last meeting, we didn't say anything.
Right, I mean, and then the Berkeley group got the impression that the sliding scale was a go.
Well, only because of one or two, one supervisor was really pushing it.
Somebody to get it done.
So.
I understand we're under contract, I, I, I understand it from since nineteen eighty nine. We shouldn't be rushing it because if we do, we're going to have a lot of problems.
And we can, and we can continue to, to take that to them.
I think they're, I think.
But they have the right as the elected officials to say, let's move on.
There's parts of it that they want rushed. For example, animals in the residential district. Staff has heard since the Berkeley group was hired, why haven't we at least done something with that and put, because this is going to be a long process? There's, there's portions like that that they want done and I understand that. But I think you should be careful. Because if you're creating new zoning districts, it's going to change the uses. Again, I just, from an enforcement standpoint, this shouldn't be rushed.
So I have a question, which is more of a procedural question for the, for the planning commission. We've only, we, we're, we have all been appointed by a supervisor in a particular district, yes, right? Two of us per district. So let's say that if I have some concerns with some of these things, I would imagine it's incumbent upon me to go and talk to my supervisor who nominated me, or at least the one on my district, of my concern that maybe we're being pushed too, too, you know, too fast about concepts that we don't understand and make sure that he has a good understanding of where we're going. Because maybe we did take it that long for the solar ordinance, that doesn't mean we should rush this, which is way more encompassing than the solar ordinance. So is, is that a correct understanding? So maybe we need to discuss all of that and then talk to our supervisors and.
One hundred percent.
And, and tell them, you know, we, this is something really serious and we're going to need a little time.
I think it's going to be beneficial to, um, I was going to do this during my course, um, but our next joint work session has been scheduled for January the twenty sixth, which is our work session, our normal plan commission work session. So it's not an extra meeting for you all. Um, but at that point, we will have a draft, um, for you, for you all to look at. So I think some of these things, it's good to be proactive to talk about it at the planning commission level, but I think we really need to see like the sliding scale, let's see on paper what the Berkeley group proposes. If they're going to leave this.
Who's bringing that, who's creating that document for the, for the?
The Berkeley group.
Will you be able to talk to them and, and pass on our concerns, like we don't under, totally understand the sliding scale way before them?
I already have, I mean, I.
And what did they say? Deal with it?
Overwhelming support.
Use your voices.
All right, are you done Kathy?
Yeah, for now.
Okay, well, that's fine.
So here's my thought, having first seen this tonight. I would agree, it's taken me a moment or two to wrap my head around this. I don't think it's accomplishing exactly what your goal was, preserving farmland. I think there probably is another option, three or four, that has yet to be presented, however. And I do agree, we're going to adopt this, we're going to get questions from the public. We better darn well be able to explain it very well. So in order to do that, we're going to understand it perfectly, be able to do that. Um, at the same time, if they're accelerating the schedule, and this happens to me all the time at work, we adjust to the new schedule. But we do that, uh, I mentioned an additional meeting, not that I really relish the fact that additional meetings, but that's what it's going to take to do that. Otherwise, that train is going to leave the station without us. Like Tracy said, we're going to get an ordinance that doesn't have our input and we don't like, and we're going to be stuck with it for the next three decades.
And, and I, and I, I agree with Kathy that we do need to follow up our, talk to our supervisors with what we've got tonight of our concerns and what we're, you know, we're, we're trying to understand sliding scale, let them know what we're doing here.
One, one comment that I'd like to make with all due respect to the board of supervisors, they're generalists, they have to deal with budgets, they have to deal with so many things. We're more the specialists, we're the land use, the zoning specialist. So I don't think we should hesitate with, we have concerns, to take them to them and say, well, wait a minute, you know, do you guys really understand the sliding scale? Do you realize what that's going to mean for the county? And I think we need to make our reservations known because if not, it's just, like you said, it's going to leave the station without us and that's going to be a problem.
Well, the smartest people I know are smart enough to know what they don't know. Not everybody operates that way.
That's a good point, especially.
On, on the sliding scale, is there a different, can you have different acreages instead of what they have here? Can you do something of a, you know?
We can do whatever we want, right? I mean, we can take this, this.
I'm still.
Well, one, I mean, for example, my phone call to Darla on Friday was, I don't know, I don't even get, okay, if you, if you're saying you can get five acres, you can get two lots out of five acres, where does the minimum and the maximum lot size come in over there? She keeps telling me, don't look at it as acreage, you need to get away from, I'm like, so what, what is the purpose of a minimum and a maximum acreage? Where's that going to be? So I can't even explain it.
If it's on, if it's on this graphic, then somebody needs to be able to explain it to you.
Right.
You can explain it to us.
Exactly.
So we can explain it to the public.
And, and so, so really, the, the board or the, the planning commission needs to tell them that we don't understand it. And we want, just like I called you up and I said, I don't understand it, it, you know, there was a couple in here that were biting off on it, but for the most part, I did not understand it, I knew I couldn't explain it to anybody. And so until we get that from the Berkeley group, I don't think we can move any forward, any, any forward with this.
I'll take that back to them.
All right. Well, I've said my points.
It sounds to me like, and I, I might be wrong, but it sounds to me like we're all basically in agreement that we don't fully understand it. We don't necessarily agree with it, but we may not agree with it because we don't all.
Well, we don't understand it first, that's, that's the first thing. And the second thing, I, I see, I don't really see it saving, you know, I don't see it doing anything.
I think it does a little bit, but I don't think it does nearly the extent of what they think it might. I think there, again, I think there's an option three or four that has yet to be presented. Maybe we can come up with that.
One supervisor kept on saying, yeah, this is great because it stops the timeline, the time thing going on. But anything else.
Time, time is only one component of that. Space is the other component.
See, they may vote for it just because it stops getting into the five years.
That, that's a very short sighted way of looking at this. Time is only one component of that whole equation.
And we need, but I, I, and maybe we're going to need to have, uh, uh, Berkeley's going to have to come back to us and to the supervisors to explain this thing.
I'm going to try to get, uh, uh, something in writing for you by the next meeting.
Please, okay.
And you also need an email, if you wouldn't mind, if you get it sooner so we can be thinking about it. By the time we get here, we can.
Yes, we'll do.
Right.
Tracy, can they, can they give us in their explanation a chart? Uh, when I've looked this up for other counties nationwide, they have a chart. I will show, I'm looking at the one for Focia here. Uh, size of parent parcel, zero to nine point ninety nine, one plus one lot for family transfer, ten to, to nineteen ninety nine, two lots. Twenty to thirty four ninety nine, three lots, thirty five to fifty four ninety nine, four lots. Can we get a nice chart showing us exactly?
I'll request that.
Uh, you know, which, which size parcels, how many lots? Which size parcel, how many lots? Because that's much easier to understand than a.
This just doesn't.
You know, well, like I want to be able to look at a chart and I've got a twenty five acre parcel, I want to see how many lots.
Me too.
I've got a seventy five acre, I want to see how many lots. Can they make us a chart for, for clarity?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Because that's how it's shown everywhere else. And I think the time component is important as well for down the road. And then how do they regulate? Are we going to limit the use of the large part in that, in that, in that chart there? If the, if the smaller squares are the parcels that have been parceled off, the big remaining land is what? In, in Focia, they call it non-common open space. It's a space that is. It's a space that is going to be remaining for farmland, right?
Correct.
So is, yes?
Yes.
Because that's the whole point of-
Yes.
Yes.
No, no. If it's a hundred acres, you got eight lots, you're gonna have these large lots, you're gonna stick a house on it.
There may be farmaments after that.
No, 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 look at that, the minimum size, maximum is two acres.
Yeah.
No.
It says that?
A lot of it is a buffering. They, they talked about that a little bit.
With the lots split.
No, it, this is, this is really poorly, this is very poorly presented then, because it's eight lots. If you have a hundred acres, you got eight lots. There's nothing in there about common space, there's nothing in there about buffers, none of that. You get eight lots.
Tracy, can you pull up this thing of Fauquier County, because it explains it really nicely.
We're not, that's- We're not county by that.
This, that's not Fauquier County.
No, but I'm just, I wanted to show you a chart, which explains exactly the same thing in another county.
Bring it, show them that, show Berkeley that.
I want, I want Berkeley group to explain this in their terms. I mean, they can use that as a resource, but we're not Fauquier County. They need to explain this in their terms. And what they're doing is they're taking a hundred acre lot, and they're making eight lots out of it.
Pretty much, yeah.
They're not making a nice little subdivision with a park and walkway. It's eight lots, period.
Well, they, they, they haven't talked, they hardly talked about clustering.
And clustering is what, Kathy, that's what-
Which is more what we would like to see.
If you clustered it, then you would have a big open space that was not available for.
And for the, for the, for the comprehensive plan, boy, it would be a really good thing. Because now you've got little communities, but you've got great big farmland, where people might wanna buy directly from the farmer, if he's got vegetables or whatever growing. Like you see in other communities.
But now we're just gonna have a bunch of farmettes.
But this, this is just a land invasion.
Yeah, just with bigger lots. That's it.
Okay.
Remountage five, a hundred acre parcel may be allowed eight lots. One dwelling unit per acre for the first twenty acres. So that's four times five acres. And then one dwelling unit for twenty acres thereafter. So you have-
A couple of small lots, and the rest of them are really big lots.
Yes.
That's it.
But they do say there are different variations of this, of this approach that can be utilized. And my point was that in certain counties, the space that's left-
There's no space left?
Well, if you restrict the lots to a certain size, and you do have-
But that's not-
That, that's not, that's not what this is.
You can't do that. You can't do that.
Because that's the whole point of sliding scale zoning, is to have a big space, which is protected by an easement. You're saying yes, which is protected by a conservation easement, and that's how you can conserve-
There's nothing in there about that.
There's nothing in this about that.
That's the idea behind it, though.
Yes, that's the idea behind it.
But they're, that's, that's not this.
That's not what they're suggesting. That's not what they're telling us.
All they're saying is bigger lots, but you're still just getting lots. And then maybe you get a public road, maybe you don't, and that's the end of it.
So it seems that what they're suggesting is not what sliding scale zoning is, is understood in most other places.
This is not sliding scale zoning, this is sliding scale division, is what it is.
I think they called it that, actually.
They call it, they call it sliding scale zoning.
That's a misnomer. It's sliding scale division in practice. That's all that it is. There's no common spaces, there's no, there's no rezoning, right?
Not, unless you wanna do a higher density.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is just, let's get some, we, we need to get some solid answers on here.
I think the idea, though, is that you have the, the preservation area, like you're talking about. Not necessarily that you have to have a park, right? If that's what you're thinking, keep, like, you just have a park and-
Something like that, some sort of-
No, no, but like a park, like you have an area which is ag land-
That you use for iron plant.
To be farmed.
Yes.
Yeah, but-
That you have still-
But each, but each parcel may or, they could have that opportunity. People may decide to farm it or not to farm it, but you would have twenty acres, you'd have an acre and a half where your house and everything, the rest of it, you put land use to get the tax break, and you may have cows out there, you may not have cows out there. But it would be your land, it wouldn't be common space.
Land is too.
And it would be up to the farmer, because if the farmer wants to put, wants to do this, this clustering, then he's got this in, in land use, or he's got it, he would be able to put in the, the easement, the conservation easement, which he would, he could make money on that. And he would be able to keep his farm into-
It's something to-
Right, but, but then, we're talking about clustering. And then clustering would allow them to go along the edges of that. That, that land along that hundred acres would then be clustered. And then, so there would be a lot of free open space out there, but you would have a tight, you would basically be doing like what we were trying to do with, with the rest of the plan. Put everything close to one, try and cluster stuff together. Like, if you're gonna build houses, build them closer to the towns. Well, if you can't do that, then-
Then create villages, basically.
Then create villages.
So that's the idea behind it. When I researched it, I just think that this is, what they're suggesting seems to be a poor application of the theory that I've been thinking about.
I think it's way, way apart from that theory.
Okay, let's, I wanna touch one other thing that was brought up at, at that meeting. And that was, uh, the supervisors, I think this, this whole thing got started, uh, where the, I think where District One Supervisor Guzy had suggested that uh, there was like dual zoning, or try to do something along three forty and two eleven, that would create kind of shovel-ready type of applications for companies if they come into town. And I think there was a lot of misconceptions. I know the three farmers are not here tonight, but I know that they were riled uh, at, at the meeting where Mr. Guzy and others were pushing for this, this dual zoning. I don't think, I know that the, the Berkeley group did not agree with it. But they didn't agree with it all the way, whereas I believe later the supervisors accepted the fact that it would just be closer into the towns. Then somebody took it as that there could be, you could tell a farmer that he has to turn his farm into commercial land. That is not true. You cannot do that. That's totally up to the farmer. But if the farmer has that land along the road, and he's, and a company comes in there and says, like what happened at Walmart, you know, a long time ago, uh, they could, they could start building the land right away, because it would be already commercial use. So it would be up to the farmer if he wanted to make it a dual use, or, or if he wanted to make it commercial and still keep on farming it as long as he wanted to farm it. And then if somebody ever came to him and said, uh, you know, like, let's say Dollar General, or, or another, or Lowe's, or whatever comes out here, not to say that I would want a Lowe's here, um, but if they came here, uh, they could, they could probably, well, they expect to build that thing within a year, to have it up and running. And that's what the supervisors have been really pushing for. That's kind of their, been their motive all along for this whole thing. Uh, so I wanted to bring that up. I wanted to know, is there, anybody want to discuss that some more? Because I know that after the meeting, there was a lot said.
And I'll just, to end with what you're asking, uh, Darla messaged me today and asked if tonight at the meeting, that we could talk about zoning map revisions, to see if there are any comments from commissioners, and, well, that's another thing, we'll go to that after this.
Zoning map.
So, yes, zoning map revisions. Same thing you're talking about. Are there specific areas that you would like to see rezoned? That's how it was left in the meeting, was you bring me-
Well, I got from the supervisors that it was, I think they're willing to accept the zoning, or possibly rezoning close to the towns. Whether it's going up and down two eleven, on the other side of, of Blue Ray on either side, or maybe a quarter a mile or a half a mile.
What your comp plan says, right.
And, 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 and two eleven, three, three forty.
There's still a supervisor, I, I can tell you, there's still a supervisor that thinks all of two eleven and all of three forty should be rezoned beyond your community service areas. Which, does, completely goes against, I'm gonna say this on record, it completely goes against our comp plan.
And it doesn't make sense.
The commercial development needs to stay close to the towns. It should not be, and, and I, listen, I'm not a planner, I have no desire to be, and I'm not an economic development person. But the developers aren't coming to us, because they have to go through a rezoning or an S U P process. They're not coming to us because we don't offer water and sewer. We don't have shovel-ready properties. That's facts.
That's why it needs to be close to town.
Right. So they can hook onto town.
So they could hook onto the town, and the town will probably come in and take it, take it over in the long run.
I am against one hundred percent dual zoning. First of all, no planner.
So it would be, but it would be, but what is-
They even said-
But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be dual, wouldn't it be just up to the, up to the, to the farmer or whoever, the landowner, uh, to say, yeah, make this commercial, but as long as I'm not, I don't have any storefronts on it, I'm gonna continue farming it until-
We just spent two years talking about solar protecting our scenic byways. That completely goes against the two years of work that you all done, in my opinion. I mean, that's not, allowing commercial development all up to Riley Hill is not protecting your scenic byways.
But, but, but then again, the, the, there, there's only a couple of spots along three forty that would be suitable for any of them.
And that's what the Berkeley group wants to know. So they, as, as you know, they don't support that, but they wanna know, they need to know from you all, um, and you'll see this in the memo, they wanna know, are there specific properties that you want? Are there specific intersections? For example, this is just an example. Coming in, uh, out of Stanley or Hawksville Diner, Mark's, uh, Hawksville Road, Marksville Road. You know, those are high-traffic areas, people come from Ada. That would be an example. Is there an example along one of those major state roads that we get a lot of traffic on, that you would like to see rezoned? That's the, in my mind, that's what we should be focusing on. Not, not dual zoning on-
Up and down the total plate?
No.
Well, I, I agree with that, and I think that's the part that we gotta pass on to the supervisors and on to Berkeley group, that we support, or, let me go around, because I can't speak for everybody here. I know that right now, I believe that it should be close to the town for one, for the big reason is, you're not gonna get anybody, you might get a Dollar General or something that goes out to Riley Hill, and there might be a place out there, but for the most part, there's just really no demand out in those areas. So, do we wanna say as a planning commission that, that like, within a mile outside, or a half mile outside of each town could become a area?
Here's, here's, hold on, hold on a second. I'll say we keep it simple. We stick with the comp plan, and that's it.
Within your community service areas.
Exactly.
Within community services.
Now, how far is that? How far is the community service area?
It's the one with the red, it's the one-
No, 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 I understand that, but what's the distance between?
I think it's variable. I don't, I don't think it's-
So what is it, a quarter mile, half mile? I agree with that. I can agree with that, within the service areas.
Yeah, I mean, why would we spend a very, very-
That's our recommendation. Well, that's my recommendation. Let's go around the room. Anybody else believe in that?
Well, for one thing-
But do we even want a zoning map revision? We can say we don't want one.
He's that of the right.
You can leave it up to the landowner.
You can leave it up to the landowner.
What scares me, guys, is, have you read here, page seven? It says, "The planning commission and board of supervisors can initiate zoning map amendments with or without property owner consent." Can you just imagine, can you just imagine? For one second, can you imagine us going to tell the farmers that we're gonna rezon them without their consent? That's insane.
They'll have a war.
Exactly, that's insane. So I think we need to bury that immediately. There should absolutely be no rezoning, uh-
Without the farmer's consent.
Zoning map revision without the consent of the population. That's not gonna happen. We don't have any reason to do that.
Without the landowners.
Yes.
Not the population, but the landowner.
Well, meaning we need to have support. We need to have support for whatever we do. So that should not be, not with the we offer-
Should be up to the landowner.
Whether we offer an option or not, that's something else. But we can always say we don't support zoning map revisions, and that's it. We don't have to support any of these things. Why should we change the zoning map?
We spent a long time on the comp plan. There was a lot of effort and diligence that went into it. Why are we gonna change it on the job, on the, on the?
You know, and I'm-
Well, because, well, I, I believe that they're, they're, they, they do wanna change it at least there in the town. Or, or through those, uh, service areas. I, I do believe that.
We spent a long time on the comp plan. There was a lot of effort and thought that went into it.
That the board adopted, by the way.
I know they adopted it. I know.
But you know, the board, and again, I'm sorry, with all due respect to the supervisors, they come and brandish things like dual zoning and that, without understanding what it means, and without understanding the implications.
I will read my quote from about ten minutes ago.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. So maybe we need to be the resistance here and saying, no, that's not the way the planning commission feels.
Well, not everybody agrees with you or disagree.
No, I agree, I know, but maybe we can, everybody can say that. But what I'm saying is, if we do agree, we should say so. If we disagree, we should say so.
Well, we'll do that in another session.
I'm not the-
Because we need to have about, about that. This is, I just wanted to bring this up tonight, and, and, because we've got new points to talk about.
Do you have to respond about it?
Yeah. So how would you like me to respond?
Well, I have a statement to make. From three forty out to where you did the whole farm, V-DOT will not give you access off of their road.
It's limited access.
It's limited access. You cannot get off of the road anywhere.
That's right.
So if that land is out there, you can't put a road over to it, you have to use one of the others and come back. So that may limit it to you as to what you, the phone company could not even cross with the telephone cable, unless we already had one there before they did.
Well, we need to identify that as an area that you can't do anything on. That you can't do that without-
It's a limited access.
Going through V-DOT and-
I think that's our only piece in the county.
Yeah, I think that's the only one in the county, but it is, and I don't know if it goes, I don't think it goes west. I think it just does the east side.
It goes west past the interchange.
Oh, does it?
Past the border where the merge, and it stops.
Okay.
So you guys wouldn't park.
So the question is, yes?
This is one of the books that was presented to me when we take the focus on the plan over. It says, "The goal for agricultural lands is to preserve and maintain agricultural lands. Agricultural lands should be preserved and maintained for farm use consistent with existing and future needs for agricultural products." It don't say anything about zoning from ag to commercial. So I think we, we in trouble when we tried to force that on people.
I'm not forcing it. I wouldn't have forced it on them. Now, what we, what she pointed out, that, that would be forcing it, and that would, that was wrong.
Yeah, that's wrong.
That's wrong. But, but if a farmer chooses to do it, he should be able to do that if he wants to.
I know Derek got upset all that because-
Yes, I know, and I don't think people truly understood. Now, if that was in there, and he read it that way, then I can understand why he'd do that.
His farmland burners, I've heard, been in that family for over a hundred years, but-
Nobody should be told that they have to sell their land for commercial progress.
This is America to say.
I, I agree with that.
How, how is Tracy gonna respond?
I know, I was trying to answer that.
Can you repeat the question, Tracy?
The, what areas, is that what she wants to know?
Talk about zoning map revisions, to see if there are any comments. If you look on page nine of the report, it says, "Since no consensus was reached regarding zoning map revisions, the board of supervisors and P C were asked to review those zoning map revisions and offer specific comments, recommendations to Ms. Clatterbuck, who will share that input with Berkeley group." So what my response is, if you don't tell me a specific property that you would like to rezon, then I, I don't have information to-
I don't have one, because this wasn't our idea anyway. This was the supervisors'. But I personally don't have any idea.
So would an appropriate response be, the planning commission proposes zoning map revisions at this time?
At this time, right.
Well-
Do you, do you have an idea?
Well, if you remember during the-
That's what I'm saying, but see, that-
That's what I'm saying, but see, that, right, that's up to the board right there.
That, that's why we don't have to recommend anything.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm getting that.
To, to be perfectly blunt, the planning commission doesn't care.
Yeah. I mean, they, they see that right there.
I, I would, I would say that our response be the planning commission recommends no zoning map changes at this time.
Right. I agree. All right?
Yep.
Do you have anything else, Tracy, on that?
Um, the other thing that they would like feedback on, which they didn't get to really talk about because the meeting went on rather late, um, but they did provide you the use matrix, um, where it shows in each zoning district what's allowed by right, what's allowed by special use permit, et cetera. Um, she would like feedback, and frankly, we're not prepared to discuss this.
We never got to any of that.
Uh, yeah, you did. You got it in your...
I know we had it. We had it, but we didn't look at it.
They didn't, they didn't present it, and so they're asking me to come to you to say, tell me what uses, what, what, what do you want to be allowed in your new ag residential as a byright use? What do you want to be allowed in the special use permit? That's what they're asking. We're not prepared to discuss it. I would just say be prepared to, um, be thinking about it. Um...
Right.
You know, are there certain uses?
Would you like how many animals and stuff like that?
That. And would, you know, like right now, ag, as you know, ag, um, garages, the last S U P we dealt with was for a garage. That's by S U P. Should that not be allowed in ag? Should it be by right? Should a smaller scale? Those are the types of things, um, that they're gonna want feedback on. And I don't want you all, if they bring it up at the next work session, which I hope that they do, I hope they're, they're not expecting me to, to get this from you. Um, I want you to be prepared. I, I don't want it to be a situation where you sit there and say, well, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, think about the hair salon. Remember the lady who had to go through a hair salon, ag, because it was in a, um, accessory building? Those are the types of things that they want feedback on. So just be thinking of that.
All right, all right. And, um, one other, we brought up about those, talking to the, I wanna see what you guys think about this. You were talking, you brought up that the supervisors should be talking to the towns. And I agree with that. Um, I'm wondering, what do we do, Tracy? This is kind of a question towards you. What do we do as a planning commission? Should we be talking to the towns' planning commissions as, or, or sharing at least this information to them? Because it can affect, if nothing else, at least share this with them. The Berkeley group recommendations and stuff like that, and see what they got to say.
Um, my response to that is, as a planning commissioner, you may, but I'm gonna be frank with you. I, I don't, that's not something that I have the time to do. I don't have the time to go to present stuff to the town of Luray, the town of Shenandoah, the town of Stanleys, planning commission. So I would say if, if you all want to do that, it's great. Somebody needs to do it. I, I can't do it.
What about Berkeley group?
The Berkeley group, they're not gonna do it. Because quite frankly, it is, it's...
Not without a supplement to their contract.
Right. Right.
Okay, four forty. That's right.
I did know, like, that the town that talked to the Mount Viewers sewer up there about doing away with their old septic, down sewer they got back there. And they was talking about running the sewer and water line out there for them to hook up, cause they have enough capacity in the waste order treatment plant to take care of that out there.
Yes, the issue...
They have been talking to people.
The issue with that, frankly, and I wasn't in on these conversations, but I'll tell you what I was told. Um, it goes back to what I said earlier. Businesses aren't coming here because of the process they have to go through. They're coming, they're not coming here because they need water and sewer. And that is a prime example. Yogi Bear is our, one of our top tourism contributors to this county. And they went to the town, the town and the county had a meeting and said, what can we do? They want to expand, but they need, they, they can't do it with their current septic. The town and the county is pointing fingers at each other saying, you pay for the cost. No, you pay for the cost. You're getting the benefits from it. You should pay for the cost. This is why, I mean, and that's a business that's already here, that we're, frankly, we're not, we're not...
It'll, it'll, and there, that's probably where the county should be paying for it, because in the long run, then they will get more and more, you know, of what they're looking for. All right. I don't have a chairman's report. Do you have anything left that you wanna talk? Oh, we do want, for those of you who have not gotten, I know we talked about this earlier, who have not gotten, think about the training classes, because that is, we need to get that taken care of, and we'll do it for you. With that, Tracy, do you have anything left?
Um, just a heads up, the solar, um, public hearing was set for December fifteenth with the board of supervisors. And also Jeff Nigus's S U P application is set for public hearing on December fifteenth with the board. And I have a, um, new S U P coming up. They're wait, they've got some stuff to do with the health department for a banquet facility, um, to do weddings and stuff. So it'll be a new, new application.
All right. Tracy, documents in counties do have trouble with their solar, the one on, the M's cabins, they done tabled it twice.
Have they?
Cause that, that must be, it's in some prime farmland, most of it, three forty.
I will say, I mean, for anybody that hasn't, um, kept up with the board discussions about the solar, and Kathy can probably tell you in better detail, but they're, they're impressed with the document that they received. They, they made what, very minor, two or three minor changes just at their intro, and they've already said...
The planning commission's been praised by several supervisors.
Yeah.
And there were, there was much less pushback than, than, than the public had anticipated. Been congratulated as a good woman.
But we weren't fast enough.
We weren't fast enough, but you know, some of us have corrected that perception. I have defended the planning commission and defended you all as much as I could privately to many of those supervisors. And I think that's starting to change it too. Because we have worked hard of it on it, regardless of what they think.
I think we need a time for this other also.
Yes, and that's what scares me. For instance, and I don't know if we have time, Tracy, and maybe I can have, bring this up privately with you, but the new industrial district, I have questions about that and concern. Um, if we create a new heavier industrial district, does that means, does that not mean we could get a, a big industry such as, for example, Merck or something coming by right instead of by S U P?
They would have to rezon.
They'd have to rezon.
Yeah.
But then, if we are going to rezone properties into two different districts, that's a much easier process than an S U P.
Yes.
Yeah. And that concerns me.
Yes.
I don't wanna see...
Well, it would have to be, but you gotta remember, they have to comply to all that stuff too. Still have to comply with whatever recommendations we have for industrial, whether there's the setbacks and all the other stuff. So...
I, I just think we need to be careful with that.
With that?
Adhere.